To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the April 14th meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. Even though we're here at the town, our primary purpose tonight is the budget hearing for the public and also our resolution to override the tax cap. So that will be our first stop is the tax cap override. So I have this resolution to read here. Whereas the attached local law was introduced by the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees on April 14th, 2014, and provides for the authority to override the provisions of general municipal law 3C, and whereas a public hearing was held on April 14th, 2014, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall, 78 East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York, notice of said hearing duly published and at which time all interested parties had an opportunity to be heard, now therefore being enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck as follows. Village of Rhinebeck Local Law Number -- Local Law Number To Be Determined?
Yeah, To Be Determined.
To Be Determined?
After I check.
Okay. A local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law. Section 1, the legislative intent, it is the intent of this local law to allow the Village of Rhinebeck to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2014, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by general municipal law. Section 2, authority, this local law is adopted pursuant to subdivision 5 of general municipal law 3C, which expressly authorizes the local government's governing body to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year by the adoption of a local law approved by a vote of 60% of said governing body. Section 3, the tax levy limit override, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck, County of Dutchess, is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2014, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law 3C. Section 4, severability, if a court determines any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation or circumstance is invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of this local law, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment or order shall be rendered. Effective date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. So we will, I'm going to make a motion to approve this resolution as read.
Did you ever have a hearing to override? And did you open it?
Let's open the public hearing on the, make a motion to open the public hearing on the override. Thank you.
So move.
Folks in favor?
Aye.
So we will now welcome comments from the public on the tax cap override.
Does anybody have a particular number of tax cap?
Maybe 1.67 or roughly 1.7. If there are no comments from--
Can I just, can I ask, because I'm very ignorant to this.
Sure.
Your first one come to, and I'm just looking at all of this stuff and a lot of it's great to me.
Fred wants to come up to the mic.
I really don't want to because I just took a boot off my foot and I've been on it all day, so, but I'll speak loud enough, I think. I have a big mouth. Are we talking about what was in the paper, the 4.89% increase? Is this what we want to do? This is what we're looking to do?
That's where it's at today, and then after we close the public hearing for the tax cap override, we will talk about the, we'll have the public hearing on the budget itself. But the budget will not be adopted. We already have a meeting scheduled for the 29th where we would approve the budget so that we could make changes to it between now and then, if we were able to.
So we're not sure it's still 4.89%?
That's where it stands right now. That's the version we have that we're looking at and that you're looking at. If it was, if you picked it up, yes, exactly.
And then I can come back to 29th and talk about this again, or is this supposed to be happening tonight?
The public hearing is tonight. And then even after the public hearing is closed, the board has an opportunity to make adjustments as necessary, and then we have to adopt it by May 1st. So we had set a meeting for April 29th to, so that we could adopt the budget.
What is this taxed on? Is it property tax, house tax? Your house, son?
Yeah, it's property tax.
Land?
Property tax.
Land only, or house, or?
It's both.
Combination?
It's both, yeah. That's determined by the assessor's office, and the assessor for the village is the town, the town assessors.
And who's the assessor?
There is three assessors, Emory Ruger, Bill McGann, and Charlie Wiles.
And have they gone around and reassessed, or, you know, because years ago, we went, you know, people fought not to have the assessment go sky high when everything was crazy, and now it's less, but nobody's really done an assessment, nobody's come to my house, but a bank has called me and told me my house isn't even worth what it assessed for.
Yeah, you'd have to talk to the town assessor's office on that. They're downstairs in this building.
Yeah.
And I don't know what their plans are.
My question is, how can you vote on this? You know, when you're not, when they're not doing their part?
Well, can I say something?
Sure.
Village taxes are a year behind, so actually your taxes are what you were assessed at last year.
Which is the same.
So that's what your taxes will be. So next year, when your taxes will come, it'll be for this year. I don't think they've done any reassessments at all, so it's whatever your assessment is at right now.
Do you think we should be doing reassessments when the tax is already?
I don't know. That I don't, I can't answer that, but just to clarify.
Yeah, that's out of our control, the reassessment. That comes from the, like I said, from the town assessor's office, and they do have a process if, you know, they have a grievance day.
So what are you going by then, what the assessors say? That's why I'm not comprehending.
Yeah, our assessed values come from the town of Rhinebeck assessors. I believe they report it to the county and then it comes back to us. We know what our assessed value is. Is that right, Chrissy?
Yes.
It comes from the county is where the official number comes from. Our assessed value of--
And how often does everybody get assessed? I mean, does it only give you down?
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're not voting on the assessment tonight. What we're voting on is the budget and the funds to operate the village over the next year. So your assessment, your assessment really has little to do with the way that this budget is. And what your assessment is, is the way that they compute your taxes so that we can fund the village in order for it to operate for the year. So really, we're just talking about an increase in the budget, not in your assessment.
All right, so then what I should be talking about is what's on here?
Right. If you have any comments about this, so it's been an increase of 4% from last year's budget.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean--
No, that's correct.
Then I just asked them, what's the piece for non-personnel?
Well, before we go on to that, also, I don't want to misspeak, and I'm new to this process, but I believe if there's some change in your home, you can request an assessment. Now, if you, if the reassessment is just due to overall market values that apply to everybody, then you'd have to wait till the assessment, till they're at that point where they're going to do across-the-board reassessments. If you have some issue, at least where I lived before, we said, we think there's a mistake here, and we requested it, and they came and they reassessed it. So, you know, you can put in that request.
I just, I just can't comprehend what this whole thing is over. What's in here? How much you get paid, you get paid or whatever? What the expenses are, like using the village truck and all of that, right?
Yeah, the increase is really just in the budget to operate the village. It's not the way your home was, or your land was assessed.
Okay. So I would be questioning this.
Yeah, the best thing to do for you would be to stop in the assessor's office. You can write demo letter. But specifically right now, we're talking about passing a resolution to allow us to override the tax cap. That's specifically where we're at right now.
So what is the tax cap?
The tax cap is 1.7%, which is defined by the state.
And you want to raise it to 4.89%?
No, we want to exceed the 1.7.
Yeah, mainly because there's a lot of state mandates, which we have no control over, even though the state's saying we can only go up 1.67%, whatever. They're the ones that are raising all their state mandates to us, like pensions and stuff like that. So a lot of the things that are in this budget, if you look it over, are out of our control.
I don't know the percentage, but a large number of municipalities have to go through this formality of overriding the tax cap, and they have not much choice.
We don't have a choice?
Well, no. If, there are mandates, there are laws that say we have to meet certain obligations. We can't stop paying employees, we can't stop removing snow, we can't stop doing a lot of things, and in order to keep doing those things, we can't do those things and stick to the 1.7. So that's, you can help us make our argument to the state that these mandates, unfunded mandates, are unfair.
Well, this, I wish I had gotten this a couple days ago. My name is Larry, and I live at 119 East Market Street.
Hi, Larry.
And a few of you I know and am glad to see, and thank you to the new people who are serving. So I have a few questions. Unfortunately, as I said, I haven't had time to look at this, so it's a little hard to pull out. I'll try one or two, just so I can understand them.
Sure.
But first, you know, we all understand the evilness of state government in telling us to spend our money and then not, you know, letting that rise to wherever it has to. So my first question is, is there no mechanism of pushback other than going to the people who live in the village? You know, you guys are going, it's not us, it's them. And I'm a little confused about why you're not able to turn around and say, you're telling us we must do these things, and the people in the village do not want to have their taxes raised 5% this year. You know, for some of us, it has not been a very busy year. So, you know, more money for fuel, less work, and now a 5% tax, which in the case of Jane and I, is more than $500 for the year. And I'm not perceiving myself that I'm getting anything for the $500. The only thing that comes to mind is that the trash service has stopped. That's, that's the only shakeout of the whole thing. So my first question is, which hopefully some of you can put some light on, is how come there's no mechanism to push back to the state?
Well, there is, there is a mechanism, you know, through communication directly with the state, through our legislators, our state senators, you know, the Dutchess County, there's an association of supervisors and mayors. There's all kinds of pushback from municipalities across the state, being villages, towns, counties. Nobody's happy with the, with the way it's pushed down. You know, they take their cut and, you know, leave us the scraps, per se. But that doesn't mean it, our pushback has been successful, historically speaking.
Ultimately, it's the vote, your vote.
Say it again.
Ultimately, it's your vote that can do the pushback.
You must be thinking of a different voting mechanism than I am, because I am not seeing any kind of direct path between my vote, which I'm very dutiful about, and any kind of relief on people spending the taxpayers' money, other people's money unconscionably. So, you know, that's, that's a very nice and patriotic thing to say. What I notice is we elect people, and what they immediately do is go and think of new ways to spend money and call it an initiative. So there doesn't seem to be a--
Direct.
You know, no direct, thank you, exactly. All right, so just to understand something, under public safety, police department. So the police department on the first line from-- So it went up 15,000 in one year. It was, it was adopted 12, now why does it say adopted twice in that line? Do you see that?
Well--
One was two years ago, the other one was last year, and then you're proposed for this year. It's showing you--
So in two years, it's come up 40,000 bucks, 35,000 bucks. And is that state mandated additions to that budget?
No, there have been no additions in terms of staff there. That, that's line specifically. You are talking about the first line--
I am.
For personnel services, correct? That's what PS is. Those are the salaries of the officers themselves.
Obviously.
And increases are tied to a union contract that is negotiated. So we have actually a new contract coming up May 31st. Their contract expires. So that is predetermined by the contract, a percentage increase, and they also get longevity increases for their service as well.
And why on the next line are, is the town's contribution, I'm sure there's a perfectly good and reasonable explanation for it, what is it?
The town, they determine, it's a fee for service. They say this year, this is what we're going to give you, and then it's determined how many hours they get. So in the village, we have two shifts that cover, you know, 16 hours in the village, but what the town gets, they pick and choose. They may get one shift of eight hours this week and two next week. They don't have full coverage. So when you see, you know, two police officers here in the village, they don't, they don't cover the town. It's a separate, a third car, basically, and that's, the money comes from the town for that. Does that make any sense?
It's, the town has 6,000 people in it. The village has about 2,500.
Right.
So I'm trying to understand the division of labor there a little bit.
Well, they don't have coverage from the Village of Rhinebeck Police very often. That's what it is.
So their, their costs for policing are picked up by the sheriff's department?
Yeah, they pay to the sheriff and the state as well.
I see. So today is the last public meeting that you're planning on having on this subject. There's, there's two subjects, right? One subject is--
Tax cap.
Yeah.
You guys are going to vote on the tax cap.
Yep.
And then the next situation is, you're going to actually look at this and see how these costs, because the pushback, which you were talking about, and I appreciate your thoughts about that, the pushback is not going to happen between me and my elected state people, because they don't seem to be helping that much.
Well, you could, you could put pressure on them for future pushbacks. It's not going to help today, but the more the people speak to their state senators, state assemblymen, and push back, maybe they'll listen.
And write articles in the papers.
And just to give you a background, this process didn't start tonight. We started with a budget that was probably three or four times where it's at today, and we've been meeting on a weekly basis, you know, the group of trustees, and we've been cutting it every week until we got to the, to this public hearing. All those meetings were posted open to the public. So starting back in, I believe, the end of February.
And this was available last week, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was at Village Hall.
Okay, so that still leads to my question. Is there going to be no feedback, or it's great to have these questions, he answered. There's, is there going to be a space or not for people to ask about these things and get more comfortable? You know, it's, it's quite a feeling when somebody's spending your money and you--
Well, that's what this is right now, and that's what all those, you know, we probably had half a dozen meetings open to the public for, you know, people like yourself to come in and give us, you know, ideas to save money or ideas to spend money.
But are you going to have another meeting to talk about this?
That's this. This is, this is the last one. We've, like I said, we've been doing this since February. The state, the state, another mandate. They mandate that by April 15th, this meeting has to happen. So this is the 14th, this is kind of like our, our last chance. We push it out as far as possible to give the public as much opportunity to come share their thoughts with us.
I'm sorry, I need to ask-- It's all right. What can one say? All right. Well, I think there should be more time, but maybe that's because I've been traveling and I haven't known about this opportunity.
Well, next year, just know it's, it'll start in, in February. If you're on, you can go on the Village website, I don't know if you've been on there, and you can get the notices. They'll come right to your email, and it'll tell you exactly when the meetings are coming. You'll get the agendas, the informational notice. Usually they're reposted on Rhinebeck Community Forum, so if you sign up for that, you would, you would get them twice.
I also want to say that in all the public meetings we had on the budget, the only people who were here were, was the press. We had no people from the public that I remember attended any of the other meetings.
Well, I can honestly say that I saw, just in the Freeman, and I went in and I saw a call, Pat, or whatever I saw, and asked, because the only thing I saw was Rhinebeck Village to increase 4.89% in bold letters in the paper. I'm like, what the heck is this about? The only time I saw it, I'm not diligent enough, I come in here every week or anything like that, but it concerns me and I want to know how the process works. And looking at this, I see a lot of increase in things that were zeros the past few years, and now $16,000.
Sometimes there'll be, and you don't want me to harp on that, but if you were at those, a lot of times the, the lines will change. The money will be moved from one line to the other. But if you look, you know, like the end of a department or something, that's, that's the best place to look for the increases. And if, if you look at the expenditures, the increase in expenditures from year over year, we're under 1% for increase in expenditures. It's a decrease in revenue that, that brings us to that 4.89.
And the other thing that upsets me, because it was in the Freeman today, is, you know, they're talking about, you know, people leaving New York City. Don't you want to keep people here? You know yourself from Rhinebeck, you ride around, you see a lot of houses for sale. People can't afford it anymore. Cannot afford it. You're getting taxed on everything. Look at the electric that just came out, it's ridiculous. Now oil is being taxed, and now you want to raise the tax. I'm a one-person, you know, income in my house, born and raised in Rhinebeck. I don't know how much longer I can live here. I don't want to leave, I don't know how much longer I can live here, though, because I'm getting taxed out. And, you know, something's got to give. Lower your heat bill, wear more sweaters, you know, it's only Christmas. I got to do that at home.
We've been trying. We don't want to raise taxes. I'm in the same boat here, and that's why I got on the board. But when you get on the board, then you realize what's going on. Can I talk about a state mandate from Fire Truck Tires?
Sure.
How much is that, how much are they saying we got to spend on that?
About, about $15,000.
And the tires are perfectly good, but they say they want us to put new tires, different tires on them.
Every seven years.
That's just one thing.
Yeah.
We put solar panels on the roofs, we're trying to save money on electric. We are saving money on electric, right, Heinz?
Yeah.
We did an energy retrofit over there in the Village Hall about five years ago, lowered the oil consumption, but the oil prices keep going up.
And when it hits us at home, you know, when we get the fuel, fuel oil increase or electric increase, I mean, the bills to begin with are so much larger here, so the percentage adds, you know, huge cost to the, to the budget here. You know, it's much larger than what we each feel at home, so it just, it shows up here as well. You know, hurts you twice, basically.
Go to home and say, we're not doing it anymore. Just be done with it.
I think it's pretty telling. I think if you go down through this budget and you kind of isolate department by department, you can see, I'm not defending it because I'm new, I'm just doing some quick math as I look, is, you can see, the board has done a pretty good job of trying to cut where they can, and some of the things where the increases are, you can identify with mandates. You can go down through, and then police is the union contract and the, and the raises that go along with that, and the benefits and longevity, but the fire department is a pretty big increase there. You can see that that's probably, you know, like how we said before, state mandates, you know, for tires and those type of things. So, you know, I just did some quick math to see where there are pluses and minuses, and where this board has control, looks like they had done a pretty good job trying to cut where they could, but there's some things that are just purely out of their control, our control.
Another thing that's out of control is healthcare costs.
I understand.
Going through the roof.
I know, I pay for my healthcare. All that.
Last year, the state pension fund went from 85,000 to 120,000. That's the state telling us how much we have to put in the pension. That's not this year, but that was last year. I'm just, another example of something that's out of our control. Heinz has been doing a good job of getting Central Hudson to change the streetlights.
Yeah, that's right. We changed all our streetlights here, 120 of them, from high-pressure mercury lamps to, to sodium lamps, which saved us a bunch of money. We tried to go to a different electric supplier, electricity supplier, to save us money.
All right, well, let me ask you a question. We had a bad winter this year, there was a lot of snow falling and stuff. We went down? Is this--
That's next year.
Yeah, we're--
Snow removal.
That's an area where we're trying to save money in the future. We're going to use less contracted service and have, try to perform the snow removal in the downtown area during the day with our normal, normal personnel.
But with all the snow we had this year, we still went down?
Yeah, well, we didn't really, they're hoping that they don't have as much snow.
Yeah, you're looking at next year.
Next CS budget.
This was an abnormal winter, hopefully.
Actually, let me answer the question.
Yeah, we went down, we're trying to save money.
Well, that's what I don't understand, it didn't all work, the last one.
Yeah, but that, but that's because also, that's, a lot of that's from cleaning the snow at night when, when there's overtime involved and hiring outside contractors. So next year, we're going to try to do it on a day, during the day, during the regular hours. Little bit at a time. We can't do it all at once, but one side of the street maybe during the day, the next side, the next day.
You can have to open the public hearing, don't you?
No. No, but hybrid.
So in the police department, under utilities, it went from 7,000 to 90,000 down to 16,000.
Partial, we had a partial year last year. Partial year last year.
I'm sorry?
A partial year last year.
A partial year?
Yeah, they were in an office trailer. They just moved into the new station, so it's, this is like our first full year of what their utilities are going to be, but between propane and electric and whatnot, where it was minimal in that little office trailer compared to what we have now.
Right now, we're just talking about the tax cap override. We're going to open a second public hearing to talk about all the details in the budget. So I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing on the tax cap override.
So move.
Folks in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing to discuss the budget.
Second.
Folks in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So if we haven't hit on them already, we will now take public comment on the, on the budget in general.
Again, and for clarification, because I'm new to this too, this will be the last public hearing, but we can still entertain comments from the public, in writing or in person, so we can, we will still deliberate up to the last minute, which is the end of the month. So if you are looking over the budget and you see specific things, please get in touch with one of us or write us a note. We will still have time to look at it.
The next meeting is the 29th of April, right?
Correct.
Right.
And can you give me the site again that I can go to, to get an email or notification what meetings are?
Right there in the--
Right there.
Middle of the table there.
Thank you.
You can sign up for the email notices too, the email blasts, right there.
Okay, thank you.
And you can get all the agendas, you can get the past minutes, you can get the copy of the budget, it'll be on there, all kinds of information.
Could you just go over, we've already moved off the subject of the 4.5, but unfortunately I don't think that fast, so I can--
Sure.
So you have agreed amongst yourselves--
Do you want to come? Do you want to come, would you mind coming back up so we can, just so anyone watching can hear the question, and the answer will make sense? Thank you.
So have you agreed now, has the vote already taken place, that you will go to raising it to 4.?
No. What we agreed on, sorry, is that we're going to raise the tax cap. We have not put a number on that.
We have established the ability to override the tax cap. If some kind of, you know, miraculous calculation were to appear, it doesn't have to exceed the 1.7.
Okay, so.
You didn't actually vote on that model yet, you only closed the.
Oh, thank you.
They haven't actually, you can change something, you can change the course of history right now.
Yes, that's very kind of you. At least someone in the government or their ancillary action has proposed that. Love the observer.
A procedural helper. Go ahead.
So, let's say that you feel obliged to raise the amount of the tax levy. Now, would you flesh that out a little bit in terms of what the state is gonna do? Because the state has both set the cap and given the mandates. Now, does that mean that it's a foregone conclusion when you say we have to go to almost 5% more, that they're gonna say that's okay, because we talk out of both sides of our mouth, and we're gonna have a tax cap on this side, and we're gonna have mandates on that side?
Well, they would probably say that we should have cut more. And then if you ask the follow-on question, where should we cut, they would say, we have no idea, that's your problem, yeah.
I see.
And if we were to cut beyond what we did now, then we would have to cut services that are expected from residents.
Okay. So the more specific we can be, yeah, and then we can have a conversation about why this dollar amount is that. And like, I mean, I learned a lot in this process about why some of these amounts are what they are. But if we're talking, you know, in general, you know, why is this? Then it's a, I don't know, sort of a philosophical question and a political question, but the. Okay, and as was suggested, there is a way to address questions about this particular document, even though we're bearing down on the finish line. There's a little wiggle room.
There's no more public hearing, but there is still time for us to enter, get your input and.
That's what you suggested, okay, good, thank you.
And we do that by what, writing to you, or coming into the office, or your house, or?
You can email, you can email. Email the clerk, and I forward it on village.clerk@rhinebeck-my.gov, and then I forward it onto the board.
Would that be on there?
Yeah, it has everybody's email address as well on the website, you can find them. Anybody else? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the 2014-15 budget.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to override the tax cap. Oh, any discussion here? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So the next thing here on the agenda is the Asher Dam and Mill Street project, that's the, what's that?
I had something to talk about, but that's, I was gonna try to come up with an example where they could, a specific issue where it's a choice of, do we want to spend the money? Do we want to get a certain result? But the dam is a great, another good example.
Okay.
There's another state mandate coming up.
Yeah, so the, there was some damage to Asher Dam. That's the dam at the bottom of Crystal Lake, and also to the pedestrian bridge there with Hurricane.
From Irene?
From Irene, yes. And there was, we got some FEMA federal money, disaster relief to make those repairs. But then there's still some repairs pending. So we have two projects that we have ready to go out to bid. So we have the bid, I think it should have gone out, be email. Everybody got that? To make the necessary repairs on Asher Dam, we have a report from the DEC that the state is mandating that we take some action there. And then in order to secure the funding from FEMA, there's additional, there's some overlap, but some additional repairs that need to be made there.
Can we get grants with that?
Yeah, well, the money was awarded from FEMA in the past. So we're trying to make sure that we still have access to that, because the work was not completed initially. So now we have the plans to fix it. And another topic on that, back to, the state mandated, the DEC mandated that all dams in the state have a full assessment. And what they did is they started with, you know, the high-risk or larger dams, and that's a rather small one, but a low-impact area if there was catastrophic failure. So it came on the tail end of it, but that's coming up in 2015. And those inspections started on the larger ones in 2009. So we had a rough engineering estimate. Now, the state has mandated that we perform this assessment. And the assessment that, or the rough estimate we have from the village engineer is about $40,000 to complete the assessment that was mandated by the state.
That's just the assessment, that's not to fix it. That's just to study what we have to do.
Exactly.
That's the state telling us what to do, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, but.
Yeah, that's an example there.
That's one dam, is there any other ones in Rhinebeck that have to be done?
Not in the village, but there's, I believe there's three in the town. All along the Land and Kill.
And who does the assessment? The state does the assessment?
No, the state tells you you have to do it, then you have to hire an independent engineer.
Are we doing that locally, or are we farming out, or?
We're exploring our options at this point, trying to complete it as economically as possible. There you go. So do you guys, I'd like to make a motion to send that bid package out as it was submitted by Pat.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah. Who wrote the specifications for that?
Tom Mannix wrote the specs on that one.
And where are these specifications?
The specifications will be in the village clerk's office, yep. And we'll make sure that she has them before it's actually posted. But because we're together here, we wanted to get the approval to send it out, out to bid. And the way that'll be, it'll be two separate projects, but it'll be so awarded that a contractor could bid on one or both, because, you know, it'd be similar work, a lot of stonework.
So the specification is like a bid package?
Correct. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next thing on our agenda here is Mr. Fenton, our building inspector, who also handles our zoning enforcement. Thanks for joining us, John.
Um, last week, I submitted a report. And in the report, it had two attachments that I wanted the board to take a look at. Basically, it was a proposal to increase our permit fees. Right now, we were basically not even close in the neighborhood of our neighboring municipalities with respect to charging for permits. I figure that we may be able to offset the village cost by pushing through these increases. And I just wanted to give you an example of how far we're off. And unfortunately, I have to use the Northern Dutch's Hospital as a example. But if Northern Dutch's Hospital built their building, 86,000 square feet in the town of Stanfordville, the permit would have been 30,100. In the town of Wapanger, the permit would have been 54,950. Hyde Park, 55,900. In the village of Wapanger Falls, the permit would have been 68,250. Here in Rhinebeck, our building permit was 8,700. So we're pretty off. So the fee schedule that I submitted last week is something pretty close to the higher municipalities with more of a population compared to our population, which was, I think, 2,700 or in that range. So I kinda scaled it down a little bit. So that's something I'm asking you guys to consider, if we can possibly change.
John, of the municipalities that you mentioned, which one is about the size of Rhinebeck?
The village of Wapanger Falls is almost double our population, but out of all the municipalities, they are the closest. I'm not sure about Hyde Park, population-wise. But that's, so that's something I, you know, I really wanted you guys to take a look at. And, you know, maybe we can pass that through and.
So it's based on square foot now, or per thousand of value?
The way it is now?
Yeah.
The way we have it scheduled out is for the first 5,000 square feet, it's $600. And then for every 1,000 square foot off, after that, it's $100 per 1,000 square feet. Okay, so it's kinda like the opposite. So.
So 2,000 square foot house would be under 1,000, did I get that right?
I mean, I was proposing that Hyde Park, it seemed like it was a pretty fair fee schedule. And around 65 cents a square foot for residential and commercial, around 75, 85 cents a square foot.
That's what Hyde Park is?
Um, they're actually 55 square foot, and their commercial are 75 a square foot. Alright. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about was a state mandate. The New York State Building and Fire Prevention Code basically mandates that every municipality perform a fire inspection. And the fire inspections would be for commercial establishments and multifamilies with three or more families in it. Of course, there's a fee schedule involved with that, but it is a state-mandated requirement. And I wish Richard was here, I'm not positive, but I think you need to pass it as a local law. You have to adopt this mandate. So that was the other thing that was in your package, that I wanted you guys to take a look at.
What was the proposed fee for that?
I basically just copied what the village of Wapanger Falls was. And it's, for a commercial establishment, it's from 0 to 10,000 square feet, it's $150. And if there is a failed inspection, and I'm required to go back, then it's an additional $75. And it just increases $50 per, the next schedule is 10,000 to 50,000, which is 200. Reinspection is 100, and then 50,000 to 100,000 square feet, which I don't think we have anything that large, and that would be 400. So again, these are fees that we can charge as a municipality and bring some revenue into the village.
How many of these have we done in the last few years? I'm sorry, so first of all, is this a yearly requirement?
For the commercial establishments, and it all depends on how you, how the municipality wants to schedule it. Normally, it's an annual inspection. The multifamilies can be pushed to once every three years. Public assemblies, anything over 50 people in one location, a public assembly requires an annual inspection. The other ones, we can, you can kinda, maybe once every two years, once every three, I think three years is the max.
When is the last one we did?
Wait, can I ask, this is a state mandate again?
Yes.
These are new mandates from the state?
No, this is, this is an older one. I, I'm not sure exactly what year this came out. I've been doing fire inspections for the village of Wapanger Falls. Six years ago, we were using this. So it's part 1203 of Title 19 in the New York State Rules and Regulations. And it's based off of the New York State Building and Fire Prevention Code. And I wasn't sure, if Richard was here, he'd be able to tell us if it was something that we had to adopt in a local law. Alright.
Yeah, but if it's a state mandate, isn't it a law?
It is, but there's no, I think the fee schedule is what you have to adopt and.
Well, it's a state mandate, but it hasn't been being done here, which has been identified by John, and as well as the fire department as a public safety issue. You know, we don't, the public establishments don't have posted maximum occupancies. No one goes and checks to make sure that they're not using their fire accesses, ancillary storage areas, things like that.
Correct.
But we would be looking to inspect.
In the last month, I've had two complaints from the fire department on some commercial businesses that I need to get back in there and take a look at. And I think it had something to do with overcrowdedness in some of the apartments, and no secondary means of egress. But a lot of this would be caught at the fire inspection.
In the town or in the village?
Village. Did I say town?
You're in a town hall, so you're confused.
You get a buy on this one.
So that's what I wanted to address the board. Any questions? No?
Who are you? I know we got this last week, but is this, these fees here is what we have now?
No, no, our fee, no, that's, that's pretty much Hyde Park's.
Oh, okay.
And so after looking at everybody's fee schedule, that seemed to be kinda fair. Some of them were extreme.
So I'd have to get our fees and compare it to this, to see how much it would be.
Yeah, we're not even close. Yeah, I mean, we could sit down and look at it, but we're pretty much half of what this is.
I look at it as less fees, as more business might come in, because look at Rhinebeck compared to Hyde Park right now. Maybe nobody's going there, because their fees are too high.
Well, but the fact of the matter is, we're not looking to raise money in profit. What we're looking to do is cover our costs in our department. So if we're running at a deficit, then we obviously need to increase these fees. But I certainly don't want to increase them just to match some other municipality.
Right, right, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah. And we don't want to drive business away either.
No, absolutely. State mandate, something we definitely need to take care of. The fee schedule, it's workable. It's really my first draft to you guys, and you take a look at it, and we could tweak it.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for the May meeting, so we can discuss it. Then, you know, we'll work on it in the meantime.
You know, a lot of the residential fees, you know, again, we could scale them down. You know, but when it comes to new construction, you know, we're real low.
No, it's a good catch, it really is.
Thank you.
And they're not huge, even though it's an increase, still, you know, a small portion of the overall project, even if you're building, you know, a residential home, $1,000 on, you know, a new home is not a small portion of it.
Right.
Unfortunately, this, or fortunately, this village is pretty well-built up. There's just a few more, two or three more places there where people can build, except for.
We missed our ship.
Except for Northern Dutch's Hospital, of course.
But, alright.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
So next, we, we got other business here, I got a couple of things on the list. I'll start with the, with our contract with Time Warner. I know Brant had been working on this in the past. We have a whole bunch of contracts with Time Warner and also with Frontier to provide our communications across, you know, all our different buildings. So it's a little bit complicated, and now with Comcast buying Time Warner, it muddies the water a little more. You know, we've been led to believe by solicitation from, you know. You know, we've been led to believe by solicitation from, you know, different attorney groups that maybe there is an opportunity in, you know, renegotiating our deal with the cable carrier. So, I don't know if there's anyone who wants to take that. I already took one of these packets, but they sent me three, so. One more. We'll put it here for later.
Okay.
Whoever wants it. So, just let's take a look at it and see if there's anything we need to do to make sure we're getting the best deal for them. Because they have exclusive rights to all of the village for cable services. And, you know, we get a franchise fee from that. But that, everything may be changing with the acquisition from Comcast.
This is Comcast supposed to be the company?
I don't have a date. It may be...
It's still not approved. It's not approved by the regulatory organizations.
But they've given us a plan in a certain period of time to respond with questions about it to Comcast. We have an application here because it's coming up. But we, did you guys get the application regarding the spring sidewalk sale from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, yes.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there is, the proposed dates are May 16th to 18th, and the rain date would be May 23rd to 25th. They're going to be incorporating Rhinebeck History Days this year. You know, basically doing historical displays as part of the sidewalk sale. And included in this request is they want to place yard sale signs beginning on May 12th, which would be four days before, taking them down the day after. And they enclosed a copy of sign that they want to put up. Basic.
In the windows or...
It's a good question.
On the trees?
Strategically placed.
I think I would not want it on the trees.
Okay. And the hours are 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM that they're looking to do it. And then there's an attached list of all the merchants and historical groups that will potentially be participating. And this is something that's been going on for years. So, I'd like to make the motion to approve the chamber sidewalk sale as submitted. Any discussion?
Well, just where do they want to display this? Could be a question.
I think in the past, they had them on those wired things and put them in the ground.
In the ground?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not talking for them, but that's what...
On the sidewalks?
In the dirt, you know, how like the political signs are.
Yeah. Oh, in the mediums.
Little wire frames.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on, a favor?
Aye.
All right. Did you guys, I don't think, I have a copy here, but did you guys get a copy of a form, a employee counseling form? Did those come out? They're in the folders?
They're all in the folders.
Okay.
Okay. So, basically, we had the labor attorney working on it and the union working on it. So, now we have a standardized form that's been approved by everybody. Maybe you saw it today in your visit. So, it's basically an employee counseling form, a tool for the supervisors and all the departments to, you know, document discussions with all the employees. So, you'll have a copy in your folder just so you know what's out there. And you could use the form as well with, you know, the department heads. Let's see. We have one other issue that we discussed last time about backdating part-time employees. So, it doesn't, it's not specifically to one employee, so we can certainly discuss it here. Basically, in 2004, there was some precedence where there were two union employees that had previous time in with the village. And then they were hired as full-time and the board at that time passed a resolution to credit those employees with time, make their start date when they started part-time. And right now, we have a few employees that have a similar situation since then. So, the question is, what do we do now? What do we use as the start date for their full-time employment? So, there, you know, there have been suggestions, you know, giving them full credit for the time. There have been suggestion to prorate it. You know, if you were part-time 20 hours for five years, well, we'll give you two and a half years, you know, basically on an hourly prorated basis roughly. So, it's kind of on the table for us to determine how we want to address that. And from what I understand, there are probably three non-union employees that would be affected by this decision.
And this would add on to their retirement or...
Not their retirement. It basically would move them forward on the accrual schedule for vacation. That's the biggest one, right, is vacation? So, if you get two weeks after, do you have it right there? Do you get a week after a year?
You get, after a year, you get, one week after two years, you get two weeks. And to the employees, it would affect them, like it would bump them up five years.
Bump them up five years?
If we give them full. If you give them half, it would bump them up two and a half years. So, it could give them a week more vacation or something to that effect. So... Like I said, in the past, they went full credit, but that's, from what I understand, it doesn't set a precedent. We don't have to go with that full amount. So, it's up to us to determine what is, what's fair and appropriate. Does anyone got any ideas?
So, Pat, you were just saying that after one year, you get one week's worth of vacation?
Correct.
And after two years, you get?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And does it incrementally continue to go up?
It does. It's one, three, four, five, seven, 10, 12, 15, 17, 20. And then it goes by hours. So, these are all in the office. So, it's 35 hours, 70, 84, 84, 105, 122.5, 140, 157.5, 175, 192.5, and 210.
So, it's not necessarily a week for a year. You may get, you know, you may get an extra week after three years, but after five years, you get an extra three days or something. But they have it broke down by hour.
So, we were to adopt this today. The folks that we're talking about, we are adding how many weeks of vacation?
It depends on how you, if you do full credit or half credit. If you do half credit, hypothetically.
Let's do full credit hypothetically, and let's just go back off of that.
Okay. Then it would be, for the one individual, one individual has nothing right now. It would be 105 hours of vacation, full credit. That's the full five years.
Okay.
Two and a half weeks?
Three weeks. 35 hours, three weeks.
35 hours, yeah.
How, this doesn't happen very often?
No, because there aren't that many that we've had part-time that have gone to full-time employ.
And we can presume that if they've been working part-time and they're now full-time, that that is some indication that they've done a good job for us, that we've, they've served us well.
It's probably happened five times in the last 15 years, and two of them were addressed by a prior board.
Correct.
And two fell through the cracks and now one is, you know, on the table right now. So, two of them are that would be affected. They transitioned from part-time to full-time years ago, after 2004, but, you know, before recently.
And so, regardless of how we vote tonight, this would also not be necessarily a precedent setting. We could still do something else in the future, right?
Correct. But when we, our personnel policies, the bulk of it in the village code indicates that simply that we'll follow the union negotiated contract. And then that just kind of carries over to the non-union, you know, office staff. But that doesn't have to be. And there are some, you know, kind of situations like this that aren't addressed. So, maybe when we do the code revision, that should be buttoned up.
And we also should note that this has not increased the budget.
Right.
Well, it will increase future budget, won't it? It'll increase the future budget.
How so?
You're giving somebody more vacation than with, if they're getting vacation that they wouldn't have got.
What would happen is less work would get done.
Right.
But the amount of money expended would be the same whether they, in one way or another. Doesn't make any difference.
Well, I think that when a person's hired part-time, they're part-time. Then when they become full-time, that's something different. I don't think you should go retroactive back to part-time. I just don't think that they're thinking about that when they're hired. They're just happy they're getting a part-time job. And they're not saying in their mind, oh, maybe in five years, if I become full-time, then I can ask for another week's vacation. And this is a little awkward now, but it's best handled during the time of hiring and negotiating of salaries then and there because those things should be taken into account. And it really should be something that's on the table and gives both parties an opportunity to decide then and there. So, I would side with Howie in that I think they're very separate, part-time and full-time. And then going forward, I think this board and whoever is responsible needs to consider those type of things in the salary negotiation.
But you wouldn't know. Unless if you're hiring someone for a part-time job, there's no way of anticipating that three years from now, you're going to have a full-time position that they're going to move into.
But when you hire them onto the full-time position, you would know full well whether you were hiring them on, from the full-time to part-time. There's a separation between the two.
So, we'll take no action on that and we'll possibly address it when we update the code. That'll be something that we'll probably should have a committee to look at the personnel portion of our code, to make sure there's no other holes in it.
Thank you. I just needed the board to make a, I need to have an answer, so I appreciate it.
Correspondence here, I have something from Central Hudson. They're having a disaster, like a flooding meeting, if anyone wants to go. It's on April 28th at 9:00 AM. A Tree City bulletin, what city foresters do. Gary?
I think I would be interested in that.
This one?
There you go, Gary.
Okay.
Mainly because our water plant sits close to the water. And if we have 10, 15, or 20-foot storm surge, we're having problems. As the people in a sopas hat, they had, Central Hudson had to come in and shut the whole place down. They got the transformers out and everything. So, I just want to see what's up there.
Anybody else got any other?
Yeah, I have one thing here. We want to update our accounting software. As part of that, we need to upgrade our internet capability to a higher speed. The speed that we have right now, we tried to send out a one or two megabyte form yesterday and it took us over an hour or a few hours, actually. And with the new accounting software, we're going to be working in the cloud and with the company, you know, back and forth over the computer so they don't come here. We can consult with them over the phone. And they require a three megabyte, yeah, they require three megabyte up and I think 20 megabyte down. And in order, we have like virtually nothing uploading and I think about five or 10 megabytes down. So, we need to upgrade our system. And as far as that is concerned, it is just a switch that I believe that Time Warner has to turn over, but it's going to cost a bit more money. Pat, how much are we paying now for 50 years?
64.98.
64.98. And the new cost for two years will be about $175 a month. So, we go from 60, 65 or so to 175 a month. But in order to operate our accounting software, we need to buy faster internet speed. So, I just want to, I don't know if we have to pass a resolution to do that, but I just wanted you to know that this is something we need to do. Okay?
Yeah, this is something that maybe we can tie into the whole package because we negotiate independently for the street department, the water department, the sewer department, the building, the village hall, and the firehouse has a separate account. So, we got five accounts with...
Different carriers. One is from T-Net and the other one is Time Warner.
Yeah, I mean, they're not all different, but we have, well, definitely one Frontier. Our phones are Frontier, so maybe we could, you know, negotiate a...
Salute.
Yeah.
Also, when, there is a move afoot to tie the town and the village together. And when that happens, they also need faster internet speed. And we're probably going to be using one cable, so there is the possibility to lay off some of the cost, to share some of the cost for that high-speed internet connection.
Just when I mentioned exploring the options, we have already reached out to Time Warner and they continue to treat it as all separate accounts. So, we got, it's going to take more, a greater negotiating force to hopefully get a better rate from them. Or maybe, you know, Frontier could do more of it. And maybe with Comcast, it's an opportunity to renegotiate with them. I'm led to believe that maybe we should have gotten more from Time Warner in terms of maybe, you know, because we give them the franchise rights that, well, maybe the village hall should have, you know, free internet access. So, and maybe Panda 24 hours a day streamed in. So... And you had something, Gary?
I attended those transportation workshops last week. Came out feeling like this was an opportunity, but I didn't think I could do this by myself, both my inexperience in grant writing for the government grant. Anyway, I reached out to Victor Cornelius. I know that Heinz is already in touch with him. On other matters, he's done some work for the town. And he thinks, he made me more optimistic about our chances of getting the grant. You know, maybe, I don't know if that's, maybe he wants the work. But he said that the number they gave, put out at the workshop of 2.7 million for the county was low, that there's actually more money in the pot than that. Victor's very experienced in this. He was the one who got the grant for the town at Vanderbur Cove that enabled that situation to be resolved. His track record is good. And I did my due diligence checking on people who've worked with him and people in the town and so on. So, he is good. He's very knowledgeable. With him working with us, we would meet the deadlines, we'd get the grant in. Still, no guarantee that we would get it funded, but he seemed to think our chances were good. His fee is three, this is a perfect example. This is not a mandate. This is do we want sidewalks? That we, the village put together a plan that was adopted by the village. And the two areas we've looked at are sidewalks to the schools, which are high on my list of priorities of things that we should get done, and a sidewalk to the library. I don't know, if the library is within two miles of the school, it could come under the grant too, but we don't know that. But in order to get the grant in, the big issue, the two items that we would have to take care of would be, one, to pay Mr. Cornelius his fee, which cannot, my understanding, is cannot come out of the grant itself. So, that's $3,000, 1,500 upfront, 1,500 upon delivery of the grant, meeting the deadline. And the other thing we would need would be an engineer's report with a budget that says, here's the work that needs to be done and here's what it would cost. And the sidewalk... And the sidewalk plan, we would be pretty far ahead in the game because of the plan we have on paper. So it'd be, the engineer's report would be about the only piece we'd need to go get. But the minimum grants for this were 200,000. So the question is, I guess, do we want to make that? I don't know what the engineer's report would cost.
Maybe we should get an estimate on that before we, you know, approve, you know, because it'll be the combined cost of the grant writer and engineer.
Now, when Victor talked to you, did he tell you, did he give you a firm price upfront, like $3,000, and then one more for 1,500? Or what was his fee?
It's 3,000 total, 1,500 upfront, 1,500 upon submission of the grant to the state.
Because when I talked to him, he wanted to have $2,500, four times, six payments of $2,500. Now, I have a different...
It's a different grant.
Different grant.
And I believe we could get his fee reimbursed on your grants.
Yeah.
We cannot on this, they stipulated that.
And this has a deadline of June 11th, I believe.
Right.
June 11th.
June 11th.
There's a quicker deadline if you want them to review it, which sounded good to me, since I'm new to this. Victor seemed, in his experience, to say, A, that deadline is movable. He seemed pretty confident of that, and also that, but that we could meet the deadlines. So he is available to help us if we should decide. I'm feeling some urgency, just because I'm new to it and those deadlines are there.
Yeah, they come fast.
They come fast.
Well, they're projects that we've, you know, not maybe us personally, maybe some of us that were on the board when, you know, they did the sidewalk study and they targeted areas where the upgrades were much needed, you know, and kind of prioritized them. And this would possibly be, you know, a good option to make some of that happen based on a previous plan.
Right.
And this Transportation Alternatives Program takes the place of multiple past programs. One was the safe routes to school.
That's now one of the categories.
Yeah, now they're all put together under this, but it's aimed at, you know, our sidewalk plan fits perfectly into the state-funded program.
Right. But just, so this is a perfect example of, this is not a state mandate, but does the community want sidewalks going to our schools? If that's something we want, then, you know, we have an opportunity to get a big chunk of grant money, but we'd have to spend some money. So that's the kind of thing we're dealing with. Hmm? Okay.
Okay.
And this is basically for new sidewalks, right? Not to fix old, not to fix existing?
No. That's another question. Some of the sidewalks that were recently put in near the school right now are not in, for new sidewalks, are not in great shape.
Which ones?
The one going right, the new, the lots that are for sale?
Yeah, well, we know. We didn't put that in.
Okay, all right.
Development put those in as part of the approval, right?
Right.
I'll learn not to raise questions like that in a public meeting.
No, that's okay.
I'll talk about it later.
That's okay.
Anybody else? I do have two brief topics for executive session, so I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss individual employee employment history.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're good? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the executive session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.